Meeting to order for the Board of Trustees of the Town of Unimistic. Guys, I'm stuck already. It's gonna be a long night. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Lacy.
Here.
Trustee Eckstein. Trustee Penny.
Here.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Ronald.
Here.
Trustee Swisher. Trustee Flop.
Thank you very much. Will you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Anybody has a cell phone, please silence it or turn it off. Of course, we have the agenda. And we have the adoption of the agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the agenda? Any changes, Phillip? Nothing that I know of?
Nothing that I'm aware of, Mayor.
Can we entertain a motion?
That we adopt the agenda as drafted?
Thanks, Libby. Second member, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just giving you guys a heads up, there are only three of you. There's gonna be a lot of seconds by somebody. Just saying.
You guys are good, right? I'm just gonna chill over here.
Next is consent agenda. Questions, comments on consent agenda? And I did have a question. Mark, are you available? Mark Dory, there he is.
I am.
Just, it was just a question, and I know this has popped up previously with other advisory boards. More so with planning and zoning, but I see all of these minutes coming in at the same time. Is there, was there a hang up there? What's the logic behind that?
Unfortunately, we failed to get them in on time, coordinating between myself and the HPC Chair, John and Brian. Just took us a while to actually get those minutes finalized. So unfortunately, we did bring them in as a group.
Okay. And that was just a question I had, and as I think I touched with some of you, I just wanted to clarify, that does help with the board when we can see those minutes as often as possible. So, thank you, Mark.
No problem. Sorry for that, and I appreciate for the heads up prior to tonight's meeting, so I could be prepared for that.
You betcha. Thank you, Mark. Any other questions? I would entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Make a motion, make something consent agenda.
Thank you, Norv.
Second.
Second row, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, that raises a question. Should I be voting?
Not a voting mayor, no.
Right, okay. Only when, if there's time, obviously, there shouldn't be.
Correct.
Shouldn't be less.
Dead and halfway through. Yeah, I'm just saying. Yeah, geez. Dark.
Okay. Everything else, I'm looking through here. Public comment. I will open the meeting up for public comment. Phillip, you can see probably better.
I've got an eye on it.
Mike is kinda watching.
So just a reminder to raise your hand on the Zoom screen on the bottom panel. There's a raise hand button. If you would like to speak in public comment.
And if you are on your phone, I don't know if we have anybody here on the phone, you can press star nine.
I am not seeing anything at this time.
Okay, thank you all for your patience. We will go to the first item on the agenda, staff reports.
Could we read into the record the email we got from Mary Jane Cavalo? Would that be?
I think it's, I mean, obviously, it's added into the record.
It's added into the board packet for this evening and things, but if you'd like, I can make a reference on, your public comment was received during the meeting, but the board had received an email from Mary and on such and such a date. Yeah, Mary Jane. Yeah, Mary Jane, yeah.
That would be great. Thank you. Okay, staff reports, Phillip. Leader of.
Thank you all. Good evening. My staff report, pull it up on the screen here. There we go. All right. Good evening. So my staff report is on page 38 of your packet. And I do have a few updates for tonight, a couple of things for a little bit of conversation and direction from the board, perhaps. The first thing I wanted to update you all on is that the town is, has received a referral request from Chaffey County for an application from the Meadows Farm. It's a major impact review for an outdoor theater and events venue. You all probably have heard a little bit about this, perhaps. So the county right now is going through a phase of gathering input from referral agencies, which we are a referral agency. We have an IGA with the county that helps outline that, but so they are asking for staff in town comment on, on the proposal. In the packet, you'll see that this is a pretty sizable request. They are looking to essentially grow upon what they've done the last several years, but, you know, do it to a little bit larger scale. They're, they're asking for 12 large-scale events, which would be defined under their application as having 1,000 people or larger or more attendees at an event, so 12 large-scale events during the year, and then an unlimited number of small-scale events, which would be attendees under a count of, under 1,000 attendees. So that is a very high-level description of their application. You know, within that, they, they do show a description of how the land would be used and things like that. So the staff's going to be reviewing a draft response that we've been working on tomorrow. So I don't have that necessarily to share, but I will say that, in summary, the way staff is looking at this is, is the impacts are significant, and the infrastructure and support services are not adequate for that amount of activity going on throughout the year. So we're really looking at how this has, has potential negative impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. There's certainly questions about the surrounding infrastructure, so you think about Crossman and the streets that access the property. Our support services are staff, so you think about everything from police to planning to our fire services, not only within the county, but also in the town, because we, we get pulled into, you know, every time they have these, these size of events. So there's concerns about our capacities to keep up with that. There's also impacts to the natural resources on an ongoing basis. So you think about how they bring in water for those events, how they handle storm, sorry, sewer and things like that. So that's, our focus is to kinda highlight those type of concerns. Certainly, there could be economic benefit to this, too. So that's, that's another aspect that, you know, that we acknowledge that more people in town could result in, in positive economic impacts, but you know, we've, we've kinda seen over the last few years, how busy our, our area is during the summer. So this adding on top of what we're already seeing is, is there, does that positive economic impact outweigh some of the negatives that we, that we have identified? So just wanna make sure the board's aware that, that we are looking at that as staff. I'm not asking the board really to give us a laundry list of things that you think positive or negative, but certainly, if, if there's things that come to mind, we can capture that and make sure that they're included in, in our response to the county. And, and also just make sure you're aware that it's going on in case you haven't read about it or seen about it or seen it or heard about it, that you're prepared in case you get questioned by the public. So I'll pause there if there's any initial response.
Of course, we don't know what the county's talking at all. There's been no communication thus far. At this point, the first meeting hasn't happened.
Correct.
Right. I guess I would be, it would be interesting to me to see what they have to say in the respect of a cap of how many thousand people are above events, you know what I mean? Instead of just saying 12 or something, you know what I mean? It's there. I mean, there's, there's probably a happy medium somewhere, but the way it is, there's, it's just unlimited. I mean, it's just kinda crazy. So I would like to see how the county comes back at that. And then obviously, when you get together with yours, because I know all you're gonna do is plant a seed at this point. And say, hey, we have an objection. And then it'll come down to nailing down exacts. So when do we have a first meeting? I don't remember.
We do. So for anyone in the public listening that's interested and, and you haven't seen, from our town website, we do have, I'm gonna move this up real quick. We do have on our, our website, the public hearing for the major impact review with the county. And so let's click on that real quick. And we have, public hearing will be held on April 6th and April 20th via Zoom. And there's additional information on this page that will have the Zoom link for anyone that would like to participate. So April 6th and April 20th are the dates for that. And I believe there is a time posted on the official notice.
And that is all on the town website, correct?
It is on the town website.
Okay. And then obviously, also on the county website, so.
Correct.
I'm sure we'll have some input from the public.
Yeah. So I think the public's pretty well informed, it seems, from what I've heard. So I think the county will have pretty, pretty sizable participation in those.
I don't think this is gonna be a quick one.
No.
That way.
No, I don't think so. All right, moving along. Sorry, anything else on that?
You're good.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to update you all on is we've, this was mentioned a few months ago when the chamber reached out to, to town regarding some of their planning on facilities. They're looking at finding an, an office space that's more conducive to their operations as a chamber. And so I did have the opportunity to meet with Melissa and John and their Board of Directors last Friday to discuss some of those plans. And they are moving ahead with, with office space at the Wedge Building across from Town Hall, and they will be moving out of the church building that, that they currently occupy, that the town owns. So they'll be making some, or getting some public notices out there regarding that move. And so some of the things that we're looking at is, one, they will not be operating as a welcome center any longer. So what do we do, especially in the short term, with that building that people have been trained for years to use for getting information when they get into town? So we've pulled in Scott Peterson from the Chaffey County Visitors Bureau, and we're talking about not necessarily staffing that, but looking at maybe some signage and a kiosk, something that's a little more automated and less expensive to operate to, to put there so people have something when they arrive. So maybe a short-term solution with that. Longer term, we are, we obviously have to decide what do we do with the building, because I don't think we want that to sit empty for too long. It's okay if it does for a little while, but we have to think about security and taking care of the building and not letting it fall into disrepair. So we are connecting with the Chaffey Foundation, Chaffey Community Foundation, the school district, and the BB Heritage Group. Right now, the school district has engaged in discussions with BB Heritage about the museum building and the potential of the school utilizing that for their administrative offices, which I think has a lot of positive aspects to it. I think the school district brings resources to the table to help take care of that building long-term. But that, you know, opens up the question, what happens to the, to the heritage museum and where do those things go? So that's a, that's an opportunity for us to join those conversations, perhaps, looking at what could we, how could this building factor into that equation? So we'll be meeting next week to kinda kick that off and see what interest level there is. But obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a good space. It's just under 1,200 square feet, and I think space is at a premium in our town. So I think we'll find a viable solution. Any comments, questions about that?
I think food, you know, food for thought, everybody be thinking about it. I think right now, it's pretty premature to go to really jump on anything, because there's so many things kinda swirling around, if you know what I mean. Obviously, there or there. Heritage hasn't said anything. So it's kinda like, yeah, let's kinda, we don't have to do anything, but we sure vandalism will become a problem. We don't keep up with it. I mean, fortunately, it's in the middle of town. Fortunately.
Okay. Anything else on that topic?
Will, will we hear anything? When did Scott, did he have any ideas?
We're gonna be touching base on a weekly basis, so.
Just keep us posted.
Yeah, he's, he was gonna go look into a pricing for it and then discuss with his board. One of the things that the county lodging tax, which funds the Visitors Bureau, can't, it can, their funding can be used towards capital cost of a visitor center. So it is an opportunity for them to participate in a solution here. So. All right. Quickly, just wanna mention that our Steering Committee for Fire Protection met again, and we're keeping that momentum going. And focus really was on, given that we're considering reducing the call volumes by not responding to all medical, how does that open up funding structure and governance structure for a solution to this? So that's what the group is currently focused on and kinda weighing the pros and cons. We had started out assuming that a fire authority was gonna be the best solution, but with that comes a pretty robust overhead, something that would have to be set up, essentially another government entity to oversee the combination of the two services. So if the call volume doesn't really justify that, we're looking at what other options are there that we can consider that's cost-effective and resource-effective for, for everybody involved. So we're meeting again next Monday to kinda hear more about what those options are and how they impact our cost of operating.
So they're kinda talking, the numbers really don't justify.
Not, not really. Not, not if we, not if taking what county EMS has told us and reducing the, the number of calls we're responding to, it's really not pointing to justifying this, this, this pretty heavy high-end structure at this, at this phase. But we're still, we're, we're still digging through it. We don't wanna jump to a conclusion yet.
At this point, it's questionable.
Yeah, there's a lot of redundancies, and we wanna make sure we maintain a high-level service, but, you know, we don't need everyone to go to every call. So we're kinda looking at that. Figuring out, and we're learning a lot about the fire.
Yes, for sure. It's, it's a good committee.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you're involved, definitely. It is an eye-opener when you get into some of that stuff, you go, I just never knew.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even just hearing their numbers, you go, wow, okay. But it doesn't sink in until you get to go really.
Yeah, like I didn't even know that our fire department was responding to every medical call until I went into this.
Yeah.
You know, and, yeah, like, Chaffey County Fire goes to 60% of our fire calls as they're called into, so, things like that.
Isn't that interesting? Things we just don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So again, I think we're on a, we're on a good trajectory there. And I, speaking with Chief Robert Bertrand today, I think the Steering Committee will be ready to bring back some of the analysis and proposal to, to our boards as early as May. So I think we're, we're on a good time, timeline there. The county is, is updating the countywide hazard mitigation plan. This was a plan that was first established in 2016. I just wanna make you aware that we're participating in that. We're identifying potential hazards within town. That mainly is around flooding and wildfire and our water source protection areas. But we're also looking at other things like our bridges, James Street Bridge, perhaps, and things like that to include in this as well. So anyway, just, just know that staff is participating in that, and, and it's pretty robust effort. And I think Mayor Lacy, you've been on a few of those calls.
It's, it's let's say, informed, but it's bringing things light, no different than the Fire Authority. I'm not saying we haven't thought of things, and when you look at the old plan compared to what we're doing now, there's not gonna be major changes, but it just makes you more aware of what's there. I think a lot of the process is gonna fall on staff when it comes to, because we have to implement, I can't remember, there are two, two or three more new things off of our old plan. We have to add to it to stay, you know, on the good side of FEMA. And so there's just gonna be some things that staff's gonna have to, I mean, obviously, we won't make those decisions unless we see that there's something we think is more important, but it's identifying. And after you identify so much, you go, gosh, what do we add?
Right.
What do we add that's gonna make FEMA happy?
Yeah, it's, it's a good process, and we've met together as staff, and we've added several items to the list. So it's a good exercise. And then finally, just wanna wrap up. I did include some updated views to our, our operating and capital, capital work plans for your, for your review, just kinda see how things are, are looking. As we've experienced last few years and with typical with projects, we've had a few things that kinda slip. But you'll see, and, and just so you know how to read this, the items that have the green on there with a date, those are completed. And then, you know, most of the things we've identified target dates, some of the things we're still developing the project and we haven't set a date, but so if there's any questions related to that, please let me know. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Trustees, questions for Phillip? I mean, the one that jumped out to me right away was hiring a couple patrol officers. That is all, I mean, obviously, you can't just pin that down and say, we will have that done by. You have to get people to apply, you have to run them through. Now, we're assisting in their post.
We are, with the academy. That's correct.
That helps. Now, I see that being as set for second quarter. Does that mean we have people in post right now going through that will graduate?
We, we, we did have, we did have two. One has resigned. Discovered that they were not fit for, for it. So we do have one that will wrap up in May. So we'll have, and then once, once he is completed with the academy, passes post, he'll, he'll join, he'll join us and start training. So, so that's still on, on track for second quarter, but then we have one more starting in August.
How often do they do that?
Right now, the, the COVID's making it a little goofy, but right now, there's, there's one through the spring and one through the fall. So it's, it costs us time to get a new recruit.
That's it. It's, it's, unless you have somebody come in that's already post-certified.
Right.
And those are far and few between. We found that out in the past.
Right.
So do we recapture any of that cost?
We do not. Not in that case, no. So that's why Dean is looking for a grant for the next one, to help cover the academy for the next one, for that we don't have to pull more out of our budget. So.
Any other questions for Phillip? Thank you, Phillip, and thank you for the updated graphic.
Yep.
Let you do that quarterly.
Yes.
Thank you. Next would be Michelle, Town Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor, and part of the trustees. I, I don't think I've ever seen a three trustee meeting before.
Get on our way tonight.
That's right. My report is on page 41 of the packet, and the transparency website and the budget URL link are both up there. And I got a nice comment, compliment from Sean, said he went through all that stuff, and he thought it was pretty amazing. So the website really does make a nice presentation. The, the sales tax for December, it's attributable to December, but it came in, in March. Is that right? No, it's a sales tax for January. I have to apologize. First of all, I need to apologize to you guys. I wrote this in the middle of a a fog, because I was sick on Wednesday, and I was still sick on Thursday, and Thursday mornings when I did my memo. So I do apologize to you guys. There's several issues with it as far as 2019 and 20 should be 2020 and 2021. Then with the local sales tax versus remote, the first grid is the local sales tax. And the issue was pointed out that the math was incorrect on the year-to-date on the 2020. That is not true. That number is correct. The January 2020 number should be 115, 335, and then that, that line will add across correctly. I appreciate that being pointed out. And the other issue is the percent change, and I'm not sure why. And Phillip, perhaps you can take a look at my spreadsheet with me, but I pulled this percent off of the spreadsheet, and I have been looking at it while you were giving your report, and I can't make the spreadsheet calculate the percent correctly. So this 45% is closer to 10%. This 45% and the remote is also closer to 10%, 10.3. So I apologize that this memo is all fraught with, with, well, with the blizzard of recovering from the shot. So I'll leave it at that. But the good news is, in the next, in the graphic below of our sales tax, is a really good depiction of how our sales tax is growing. That maroon line is 2021 January. So it's marching along, and we'll see what the rest of the year brings. I think we're gonna be wiped out at the end of the year. And then the rest of my report has to do with checks over $2,000, and I am open to taking any questions at this time.
Any question for Michelle? I hear nothing, Michelle.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. And thank you, Libby, for pointing out some of those things, and Michelle for bringing that forward. We appreciate it.
Yeah, and I promise the next time I'm sick and I'm writing a memo, I will have Phillip or Libby or somebody edit for me, so that it doesn't happen like that.
You know, it's a plus that it was from the shock and not the COVID. Just saying. Just saying, just saying.
It is a plus.
It is a plus. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next is Principal Planner, Mark Doring.
Wait, Sean.
Oh, did I jump?
Oh, you're right. Oh, yeah, that's in the wrong order on the packet.
Yeah.
But the actual packet shows Sean next.
You wanna, you wanna stay with where we're at? I don't mind.
You want to arm wrestle for it?
Let's let him wrestle.
Yeah.
Sean, go ahead.
Thank, thanks, everyone. Got a little bit in here, so I'm gonna kind of, Philip, stay with me, I'll get through this. Got some highlights I really want to focus on. If I skip over anything that is, um, important to you, feel free to, to, uh, to circle back on anything that I might, that I might miss. So just wanted to get with water, just want to talk about, uh, a few things with the projects and obligations. So we're on track with the water plant expansion project, so things are going good. Still likely to, uh, have the notice board on April fourteenth. So you'll be seeing a resolution come your way at that first meeting in April. I, um, got some proposals, some quotes for our water storage tank maintenance. It's that five-year program where we bring, uh, people in to inspect our tanks and do some diving and, uh, give us a comprehensive inspection report as well. Well, three, um, we, we wound up on CDPE's radar for, uh, water compliance testing for groundwater under the influence. So, um, we kind of saw it coming and, and I think we anticipated getting that budget identified for what might be coming our way. So I think from a budget standpoint, we're doing, we'll be okay with our laboratory testing. But it's definitely going to have an impact on our staff. So we'll be doing, uh, I believe about three quarters of sampling. So we've already done it once, we did it prior to, um, converting the, or initiating the potable water treatment side of the, of the well. We did it back when it was, uh, probably in two thousand fourteen. So in all likelihood, the results should, should be positive on our end. For just, uh, forty-one acre feet of project water from southeastern water conservation districts, that's kind of, uh, capturing what we, what we used last year. So we're still trying to book about a thousand acre feet in that account. And we have, we're about seventy-five percent capacity in what we can store, uh, with those guys. And so that's, that's done, that's great. Street projects is really what I wanted to kind of talk to you guys about a little bit in more length. So I identified some of the projects for two thousand twenty-one and I just kind of wanted to share them with you and just to see if there was any concerns on your end. We have a lot of streets that we could choose from. But looking at what I have on here seemed to mesh pretty good with what we had anticipated wanting to do back when we established the budget for chip and overlay projects. So I'm a little bit over on chip and I'm about five thousand over on what we budgeted for in two thousand twenty-one for overlays. But I think based on our, our, our income tax, I think we should be fine. I think the big thing for that is that we booked the future highway projects. So I think we have a hundred and fifteen thousand in there this year to book. And I just want to make sure that I retain that. But I think we're going to have an opportunity to do a little bit more work. And, um, uh, I guess as we kind of get through the year, we'll see how that goes. But the chip seal projects identified Crossman Avenue, um, South Railroad Street, um, kind of cleaned things up down there by our sidewalk. We put our, our sidewalk, safe route to school project. And then three, um, short streets, Raymond Lee, Robert and Susan Drive. They're all going to need a little bit of rehab prior to chip seal, but they're in good enough condition to allow us to do those. And I think that'll be a good benefit to kind of ensure that those streets, uh, have some longevity. The overlay projects looking to pick up old from what we did on Pleasant Avenue or, yeah, Pleasant Avenue in San Juan a couple of years ago. Anyways, bringing the Pleasant Avenue overlay with a pretty extensive rehab at the intersection of Brookdale there by the post office. That, that intersection is pretty well beaten down. So that's kind of a rehab subgrade prep prior to the overlay. And then if, um, we could get in and time it right, we might be able to get, um, North Court Street done while they're working on their offsite improvements. And, um, just don't quite have enough to get all of East Arkansas done this year, but we can do several large, large patches there. One thing I've kind of talked with, um, Mark and Philip about is coming back in on Arkansas and maybe looking at a, a future street design with sidewalks. So it's, it's kind of a weird street. It has, has a lot of asphalt in there that, um, yeah, kind of, uh, in, encroaches beyond the, you know, traditional twelve-foot drivelines that we have in town. So I think looking at those improvements in the future, I think maybe we want to try to establish bike lanes and sidewalks and if we want them there in the future. A couple of notes on that, you know, the, um, you know, just to follow up on what I said earlier, you know, patching milling and subgrade prep crack ceiling, you know, will be as applied as needed to, to those streets. And, um, anyways, um, it looks like a pretty good list for us. And I think that we have some really good opportunities with some, with our staff and, and hopefully with our, our consultants with those projects. The other thing I wanted to talk about, uh, was thanks for last week. Mayor, appreciate the Arbor Day, uh, signature and, and, um, coming at you. And this report is the, is the Arbor Day project. And so the Tree Advisory Board and staff, uh, applied for a Colorado Tree Coalition grant and we, and we received it. So it's a nice feather in their hat. And so congratulations to those guys and all the work that they, that they do. And there's some information on here regarding the grant. And I have, uh, the project scope listed in here and then the grant award. And again, we're kind of going back to, we're not kind of, we're, we're going back to the railroad street sidewalk project on Marquette with the tree planting in the, the landscape drainage areas right there. So, um, just wanted to share that with you guys. We have the funding sources available to do this project with the Tree Advisory Board Operation Funds and the Adopt a Tree Fund. I think we're still going to be able to do some adopted trees, but the tree board wants to convene on that next month. And we'll move forward on that, that project after we get this one kind of wrapped up. There's a, there's a lot of, uh, um, site work and site planning that needs to be done for this project. I guess that's about it. I did want to follow up on a couple of things. I don't know if you noticed any tree trimmers out today. We, we identified a hazardous tree on James Street, uh, last week. And, um, appreciate the citizens that reach out to us identifying things that we don't always get to see. But we did the removals today and, um, we're making efforts to, to mitigate the James Street Bridge damage, uh, looking at the wells that broke and looking at the, uh, approach that we want to take and, and getting, you know, new guardrails, which is likely what we're going to probably be implementing there. The, um, traffic rating on that guardrail probably is a little unknown at this time. It's pretty, it's a pretty old bridge, but what we put in place there, we want to make sure that it has, um, efforts that meet our, our driving standards and, and we'll, we'll do what we can there. Anyways, that might take a little bit, but we're trying to approach it with, with, um, I don't know, effectiveness. We really just don't want to, well, put those wells back on because I don't know how strong they are. But, uh, we'll get to it as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, any questions for Sean?
I'd like to, um, mention the bridge. Sean, one of my neighbors saw a pickup truck hit that guardrail and take it out like that. He said it was during a snowstorm. And he was also suggesting that we put up some sort of a sign that suggests it's a one-lane bridge so that cars don't meet there on the bridge. I mean, I, I assume that bridge is pretty strong, but, uh, but it is narrow.
Narrow bridge, yeah. Thanks, trustee fair, I'll get that noted, appreciate it.
Um, the well number four, it says you've identified locations that may be ideal. Is that on the farm, uh, the, the development or not?
That's a, that's a good question. It is not, um, you know, I can, I can focus on that for a minute. Just kind of wanted to get you guys up to speed. So I'm, I'm still waiting for the, the report from Wright Water Engineers identifying that. But we've, we've, um, I've been into the discussion, Zoom meetings with, with their team. And so evaluating the findings on that, um, really kind of what we're looking at, is, is the River Park site near well three. That seems to be more ideal. There's, um, likely less environmental impacts. There aren't any existing wells near that. We don't have any, any other users in that area. Obviously there's going to be some hydraulic, uh, efforts needed to identify, you know, the impact that, you know, two wells, you know, within a fairly close proximity might have, um, on each other. But there's a lot of infrastructure there already. Remember going back to well three, um, project, we, we installed, um, a lot of, uh, infrastructure there for, um, water and chlorine to mix. And, uh, that line is, um, is designed, I think, at least ten times larger than it needs to be. So there's an opportunity there to, to draw some water out without, um, you know, a, a big, contact time chamber transmission line effort. The, the, the findings for the Track J site was it, it basically is just, just too small to put everything in that footprint. I'll have a better report for you once Wright Water presents it. But, um, um, just, just the, just the constraints of trying to get everything to fit in there to do what it needs to do to provide, um, treated water. It's just limited and, um, and that's what the findings, um, you know, showed with that. And, and there were also some, I don't know, I, I don't know if I can classify them as, as environmental impacts, but there's, um, there's some drainage problems that, that are happening or that could be mitigated, but naturally want to happen, um, in that location with, with stormwater that could impact that site as well. And one of the other things, and it's not really a deal breaker, but there are some users within a six-hundred-foot setback requirement that, uh, have wells on the east side of that property. And, um, you know, that's not anything that we would probably have an effect on, but it's something that, um, needs to be considered as well. But the, the main thing is just getting everything to fit on that Track J. That was the big problem with, that we're seeing with that, with that line opportunity there.
Yeah, that's disappointing that that's not, seems like it's not going to work out when that was a significant draw when the farm actually presented. They're like, and you get this well site, but apparently not, so.
Well, you know, we'll, we'll, um, yeah, I, you know, maybe, maybe there's an opportunity in the future. You know, again, I, I, I want to, I want to share with the report findings before we move away from it. I just wanted to kind of get you guys up to speed with, with where we were kind of landing right now. Likelihood, uh, of that being a site that would be in our community's best interest, you know, time, cost-effective, feasibility, it's just, it's just not showing that right now.
Yeah, that'll be interesting to hear the final report. And, you know, I'm gonna think about that when they present their next subdivision or whatever at the farm. So, thank you, Sean.
Yep.
That's a good point, though. I'm not saying it's a deal breaker.
No, but it's something to think about.
I'm glad Sean's looking at the, the logical side of, wait a minute, we've got the infrastructure already put here. We can utilize it.
Yeah. And if, if I may, yeah, I, the infrastructure at site, or sorry, well, three is, is different than when we were first looking at the farm. So that's a new opportunity that we didn't have at that time. The other thing is that, that site might still be very suitable for an irrigation well.
Okay.
For the farm as opposed to, you know, now we're really looking at, uh, sizable wells that connect to our potable system. And that's why, you know, you know, kind of the mindset shifting a little bit. So it, it is, we were a little bit disappointed as well with the report, but now's the time to re, reassess before we invest a lot of money and not get what we want out of it. So, right, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, because the irrigation is minimized on the farm anyway, just by, just the way they're laying it out and stuff. So, I mean, it's nice to be able to water that way, but it isn't crucial. Thank you, Sean. Uh, next is, now we'll try Principal Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. My report starts on page forty-eight. It's the beginning of construction season. This report is through February. We got eleven building permits last month, so that brings us up to sixteen through the end of February, not through the end of January as it shown. We're starting to see a couple COs. We have a few things under review. We had the water ordinance that's before you tonight, go to the planning commission. They did make some recommendations, we'll talk about that later. Historic preservation, um, doing a lot, as you can tell by the minutes. But the big thing I wanted to share with you guys is this. Our historic landmark plaques are actually in. So we will soon be getting these installed on our landmarks in town, probably starting with Nancy Locke's house on Chest. So, um, thank you for allowing us to purchase those. We've got those and we'll be looking to install those and getting some photo ops for the town and for those owners. A lot of conversations, what we call pre-applications conversations before they actually apply. We have a lot of people interested in doing a lot of things. A couple of projects up East Mate Street, a couple on Gunnison. We're talking to some people about that thirty-eight acres south of Sunset Vista. There's fifteen acres southeast of the high school, we'll actually be talking to them here again in the next couple of weeks. There's a half acre parcel on the north side of Marquette, just east of the high school. We had a conversation about that, you'll probably be seeing some homes there. Just a lot of people wanting to do a lot of things in this town. Working on several site plans and a whole bunch of subdivisions. We have a lot of things being done right now and we're trying to manage through as best as possible, particularly if we get some of these pre-applications coming through for a formal application, which is kind of been pushing our, our approach to our statement specs a little bit to the back burner, but we're still trying to keep on top of that. Big thing at some point, we'll need to have a conversation about what we need to have people submit for reports and building permits and subdivisions. Something we've been trying to get to for a while, but just haven't been able to get done. Hopefully we get, uh, some more assistance from RG on that and we'll be bringing something to you hopefully soon. Other than that, we've had a little bit of a setback with the amount of development that we're getting and amount of development that the county is getting. We were trying to get a meeting with our planning commission and the county's planning commission for that IGA that we did last year. They are in also a, a lot of cases and they are, we just hired another planner. So they are starting in on their nineties code. So I have a feeling we'll be pushing that to the fall to try and start those conversations between our planning commission and theirs. Other than that, we did do the review for the demolition of the Texco at Main Street and Highway twenty-four. Still working on alley improvements and working on a Crossman's addition water master plan that we hope to bring to you next meeting. With that, I will shut up and ask for, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer at this time.
Trustees questions for Mark? Is this something, the, the meeting between the two planning commissions, Mark, do we need to push that a little bit?
I, I, given the fact that it took us, what, Joel, twelve, fifteen years to get to the IGA? I'm, I'm not. given the fact that it took us, what Joel, 12, 15 years to get to the IGA, I'm, I'm not necessarily concerned. But I do want to get something off board where our planning commission and their planning commission agree to a map. This there's a lot of conversations about growth in the county and how things are going on the edges of town. I know Salida and the county are experiencing a little bit of heartache. So I do think that is something that we can try and fit in the fall and keep us on track.
And, and the reason I ask that is just what you said, it took us this long to get to this point. I don't want to see it go away because we're busy. You know, I, I hate using that as an excuse. It's like, no, you know, we're busy, yes, but we need to take time to make sure it happens too.
Yeah, I, I think the particular thing affecting the county is they're starting in on their land use code rewrite now that they've completed their, their comprehensive plan. So I think they'll be starting in on that, which is what part of the reason why I'm assuming they hired another planner. So.
Sure.
Hopefully we have a little bit of time to dedicate this summer to try and get something going this fall so that we can have something when we bring back the three mile plan to the board. Hopefully early fall, early winter.
Thank you, Mark. And, and Philip, Bob would be our contact on that. Christiansen. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Well, definitely we want to keep on top of that. Appreciate it. It is going to be busy. Jack.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. You can find my report on page fifty. Staffing, Shonda was away for the March break time. She just got back Monday. Myself, I'll be out of the office Thursday throughout to the weekend. Reference fuel supply. Well, we are a hundred percent at fuel now. We had the truck. Effective one March, we became an F fuel customer and then on the second of March, we had our meters tested. They all passed make, got state certified. The truck got inspected, so and it got taken away on the 18th of March. So that's it. We are pretty much, we are done with world fuel. At fuel seems to be working out quite well for us. We have a new POS system. The truck is working out really well. The line taxiing that really liked the truck. Very similar on the next page, you can see there is an actual picture of the truck. It operates very similar to the older one that we had. And it, a little simpler actually. So yeah, we're a hundred percent with the app when we're, we're, we enjoy their services and they seem to be much more responsive than the world fuel was. Operation wise, nothing to report. And in fact, I have yet to get any requests for testing this summer. So we'll see what happens. Equipment wise, we're good. If you look at the operations, February is up slightly than February of 2020. So we're doing a little bit better. Fuel sales, I added January in here because we had a typo the last meeting. So this, the January one, you can see that we've, we in fact did better on both Jet A and 100 low lead. And, and the February sales are pretty much equal to what they were last year. So we're, we're holding, we're staying on track. Other than that, I have nothing else. If there's any questions.
Anything for Jack? When would we normal, normally here for testing, Jack?
Well, we probably would have started hearing by now, but still, you know, with the winter COVID and plus we had a late season. We had folks were here late in the fall and again raining in January. So we'll see how it goes. See if we get any of the folks back, but we should start hearing very shortly if somebody's going to show up this summer.
Thank you, Jack. That is it for staff reports. First item is this item on the agenda is a public hearing proposed code amendments to chapter 16 concerning water dedication. Adoption of ordinance number oh five series 2021 entitled in ordinance amending various sections of the municipal municipal code. Renaming and amending article sixteen dash dot oh five by the addition of a new subsection sixteen oh five, five, three, six. Concerning water dedication and fees in lieu for development. Amending article sixteen dot oh four by the addition of a new subsection sixteen four, four, eight, one concerning adequacy of the water for development. Amending subsection sixteen oh three, three, point three, point four, point eight concerning accessory dwelling units and amending section sixteen dash oh seven. Point seven, seven, two with new definition for single family dwelling unit. Love all those dots. So I'm sure you put those in there on purpose. Or maybe it was Philip. Or Mark. Or legal.
Legal.
Somebody had some legal. This is a public hearing, so I will open up this portion of public hearing to staff comments. Who is leading this one? Philip?
I'm going to turn it over to Joel.
Joel?
Thank you all. Good evening. Yeah, this is a, a pretty important proposal here. You guys know, we've worked in, in the past years to try with our UDC and flexibility with, with that and granting different opportunities for people to build and development that goes, goes along with that as well as trying to provide more options and flexibility to, to broaden the housing supply. Which is perfect and it is hopefully intended to help address some of the housing issues. And simultaneously as people are developing more and more and more, and it's been kind of accentuated by this COVID, you know, COVID 19 and people working remotely and people wanting to live in the rural areas. We're just seeing, as you all know, a tremendous amount of growth. And so recognizing that we're taking a look way out in the future of, of how to ensure the other kind of a side of that coin of problem, which is our, which is our water. And making sure that we have enough water now, but also well to the future that we can make sure that we're trying to get some more water. And when opportunities arise, we have some money in the bank where we can jump on them. So some things might be water, additional water rights. It, it, some might be storage, some might be reconstructing existing storage and augmenting that or constructing new storage, going to water court. Another, other ways, building wells, et cetera, to help, that can help diversify our town's water portfolio. So so this, this evening. We're taking a look at this code to help protect the water supplies and tie them into development first and foremost, so that people who are able to build and make pretty good profits right now, you know, the, the supply and the demand right now, the curb is, is very favorable to the builder. Less so to the purchaser and that'll work itself out as the market tends to do, but it might take some time to do it. And in the meantime, we can use that new development to start building up our nest and not have it all fall on the burden of the existing residences and homeowners. So, so the request tonight. You guys, you guys have been aware of all the town water supply and CFS and how many how much water we have available. We've talked about this quite, quite extensively. Our town's existing 3.88 CFS of water. I don't include any from the Howd property because that hasn't got through water court or anything now. But that'll give us about thirty one hundred plus SFEs of water. You guys recall that an SFE is a single family equivalency, which is about 293 gallons per day for a, truly for a three quarter inch tap. And if you have a, you know, a smaller demand town home or something, you use a little less, but you might have a one inch tap, you use more, but that's generally the average. Currently we have about a little over 1700 SFEs that are in use around town. And if you do the, the math. We have about 1300 additional units of housing that we can be building on. And that's for all of our potential development, all the lots that exist that are already platted. That would be for any unknown plat, like a subdivided land that we don't know about yet. That'd be for ADUs, townhomes, et cetera, businesses. So those are, those are all the like Colorado Center, Crossman Edition, South Main, Sunset Vista Four, all these potential elements out there. And then there's a little bit left over, about a hundred SFEs. So that hundred, a hundred and ten SFEs there. That's not enough. We want some more potential water. So we have this development fee, this water dedication fee that I'll walk through here in just a second. The, the recommendation tonight is going to be to either approve the following, approve with amendments or of course deny it. Some key points, and I'm not going to walk through the whole the info in the packet, but please bring, bring some of that up if you guys have some questions, but key points tonight. Before we get into public comment. This, you guys, if you guys were to approve this, this evening, it could go into effect 30 days from the date of publication. We would like to extend that a bit to June 1st so that that gives time for people to submit their billing applications. It is, gives time for people, you know, to work with their financing situation and not have an unexpected fee. So it gives a, gives a couple of months in there. We also are going to propose, you know, originally we said, hey, this, let's make this the same fee that is currently in our P schedule as the cash in lieu for annexation fee. We'll change that language. We're going to bring it back April 13th for consideration. But we'd like to have it for two thirds of what the current fee is. So bring that back. And the reason again is so people can kind of ease into this fee a little bit more. So currently $6,000 for a three quarter inch tap for annexation. So it'd be two thirds of that, no, $4,000. We're going to do a ma, the, the water master plan we'll discuss later this evening, but, but part of that kind of a secondary project is a water rate study. Now, water rate study will inform what the actual rate would be later, later in the summer. So we're proposing, proposing that two thirds of what the cash in lieu for annexation fee would be. The second key point is that the proposed code is really for any building project in town. It wouldn't apply to developments with vested rights and Catherine can talk a little bit about that here and in a minute, but it wouldn't apply to developments with vested rights. It would also not apply to contracted water obligations that we have. The, we owe the Ivy League, which is at the golf course, 11 water taps and we owe the Big Meadow 115 water taps. This is from a 1974 agreement that still exists. There might be some questions like the, the some projects are in the works. I know the, the farm has their phase two that, that we haven't seen their final plat where it's under review at this point. And then there's building permits for individual lots. And, and maybe after I go through these, these key points, we can have Catherine kind of rephrase again, what, what projects this would or would not apply to by June 1st. So we, we have that a little clearer. So Catherine, I'm going to put you on the spot in a minute, giving you some warning. This also would apply to change of use. That would require an increase in tap size. So this is all based on fixture count. And so if you have an office space, you're going to convert it to a laundromat and you have to increase like your, your tap from a three quarter inch tap to a one inch tap, then there would be that difference to pay. Okay. So, so we're capturing use of the water. The next point, there is a, you know, I want to stress that this is a for water, this whole, this code is to address our water. It is not intended to deal with our, like to address housing, short-term housing in particular. And I know there were some, some questions about that, in particular, this number three. It contemplates that each ADU is, you know, each ADU would pay this equivalent fee. So if you, if you require your billing in ADU and you have a three quarter inch tap currently at your property and you need to because of fixture count go up to one inch tap, you pay that difference. But there is a waiver option for an ADU and the idea behind that is just you could opt to put your ADU in a, a long-term rental for three years and not pay that way, that fee. Okay. So you'd have that waiver. From a pure dollars and cents point of view, it's not much of a carrot, but it is a little mini carrot and it might appeal to somebody who doesn't want to pay the fee upfront. And, or doesn't have any plans to short-term rental their ADU, et cetera. So, so it's a little mini carrot. And it's, hopefully we'll capture some people. I don't know how many people it would capture, but it's just this little potential that we added in here as a, as a, as a bonus. The fourth that is that any developer can bring their own water to the table instead of paying the fee. You can take a look at that if there's some folk out there with water rights. Fifth, there's no trading nor crediting of SFEs. Six. So this is, we're going to see this is a little bit different from what we talked about. We talked in a, in a work session back in January with everybody. The state statute says that any project with 50 SFEs or more has to do this water report. And because of the recommendation of the planning and zoning, we changed that to rather than 50. I think the wording says the potential to use 32 or, or more SFEs. And so that will capture some projects that only have, you know, maybe 28 units in there, but they still have the potential to add ADUs. And we want to make sure we understand what the impact of that whole potential is on the, of a subdivision on, on the town. So, so it's a little reduction from the 50 as per the planning and zoning recommendation. And the, we also have in there that the town administrator may require a water report for, for any project. So so if there's something of particular curiosity and how it might impact the, the water in town, town administrator can say, yeah, I know you don't, you're not proposing to use this 32 SFEs, but we don't know what this is really going to do. So you need to do a water report. Might, might have to do a seasonality of the water use or some other thing. Seventh. The town administrator can determine a maximum amount of water that could go to any proposed development. So so we have that written down pursuant to applicable law and state statute, the, you know, no subdivision, no development, no building is assured any water. You know, town needs to have that water in order to give that. So but both of these items are, are written down and spelled out in the code. And and lastly, this is a. Kind of cleaning up some of the ADU. Language, which is a separate part of the code, Duff, that's why you had to read so much in that intro. So this is a an additional reference to the code, and this is about adds an inference clause. So ADU inference, and it gives the. What it really is going to do is reduce the transaction costs for the developer and. By increasing the flexibility and the ability of the town staff to infer what and what is not an ADU, so. Lot less going back and forth, a lot less time suck for for staff, and hopefully make things a little faster. For the developers as well, so. So those are the the eight points. Catherine, can you go over again like? That that point number three, what is? Some of these subdivisions that are in process, where would they stand? Where would they need to stand by June first? In order to, I guess it's number two, in order to. Not pay some of this, this fee.
Yeah, so if you have a subdivision in process already. Obviously, this ordinance hasn't been approved, but even if it was approved tonight, I would say that once they're in process, we would not. Impose this ordinance on on, once they're in that process, even if it becomes effective while they're still in that process. This is really for new applications received after June first. But the the one thing to remember on a subdivision issue is is I I kind of look at this ordinance like a funnel. You, you know, you have annexation at the top and subdivision, and then site plans and building permits. And as development moves through that funnel, this, the purpose of this ordinance is to catch it everywhere, so the town can review whether that. Water dedication or fee and lieu has been addressed, and you get credit for for past payments, and and the town can evaluate any. Increase in the fee and lieu over, you know, a time of development from, say, subdivision to a building permit. So if you have a subdivision, which maybe recently went through or is in the process of going through. You know, it it would get through before having to pay this as part of the subdivision process, yet when a building permit came in, let's say, for a single-family residence. The town could review that building permit. In in compliance with this ordinance and would apply the water rights dedication fee and lieu, you know, an individual property owner, it's like, I probably have many water rights, I'm guessing. And so they would be subject to this fee and lieu. The way that a developer could avoid that, at least in the the short term. Is to request and obtain from the town vested rights that Joel had mentioned, that the, something like the Colorado Center has vested rights, and. I think it's to twenty twenty-five, but don't quote me on that. And so that vested rights provides a level of protection against any changes in the zoning code of the town, which is where these these changes are being made, so. If you had a subdivision coming through for final plat, which is a is something that's eligible for a request for vested rights. You know, the developer may want to say, ask and obtain, you know, maybe a three-year vested rights period, so that. The lots could be sold off, owners could come in and apply for a building permit and not be subject to this, to this ordinance, because they will have. Come in before with the vested rights and and be protected. Now, maybe after that three years, not all the lots are developed, and someone comes in and they want to, they know they submit a building permit. They would be subject to this because the vested rights would expire, so that's how the vested rights work and the effect of their expiration. On development. Hopefully, that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, that's super helpful. I'm sure trustees probably need some clarification and things, of course, but. Want to stress this last thing, this is, of course. For kind of supporting our water rights and expanding that portfolio, we could think. Probably spend four million dollars tomorrow if we had enough, and we certainly could spend an additional fifteen billion on another project if we if we had enough. This won't get us that far, but it would contribute significantly to that flexibility and our ability to. Augment. On the Colorado River water, project water, et cetera, so. So, thank you, Mayor, that's my intro.
Thank you, Joel. Trustees, any clarifying questions for staff at this point? Mark, Sean, do you have anything you'd like to add to this? Obviously, this is directly tied with. Public works and planning, so any comments you'd like to add?
None at this time for me, unless you have questions, I'll be happy to try and answer with the rest of my cohorts.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Yeah, I I don't have any comments at this time either. I think it's amazing foresight. Lot of work went into this. It's the first time I've got a good look at this, so. Think think this is good planning.
Hey, thank you both. So that as this is a public hearing, I will open this portion of the. Hearing to public comment. If there is anybody in the public who would like to make a comment, just as we did in the public comment portion of the meeting. You can enter your name and address and subject into the Zoom chat box. You may press star nine. And ask for public comment, click the raise your hand button if you have anything that you would like to add. I don't see anything. Do you see anything?
No.
Thank you all very much. I will close that portion of the public comment. Real quickly, is there any other clarifying questions for staff? Okay, I will close that portion of public comment, public hearing, excuse me, and trustees, interaction between us, any questions, any comments that you have?
I have a couple of just small. But meaningful changes in the wording under the third whereas in the ordinance itself. It says the town has reached a point where a new development necessitates that the town acquire water. And I think that should just be where new development, not because it's not a new development that's caused this problem.
It's a. Let me open up the. The portion of the public hearing.
Staff agrees with that comment. With that edit, yes.
So that's changed, we'll go ahead.
And then the other one is just on page fifty-seven, item number three. Says the effect. Previous annexation should be the effect of previous annexation.
Okay. Is that the same on that tour?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
Yeah, that is it.
Okay, thank you. You have anything, Devin, you'd like to add?
Sounds good.
Obviously. We've had this discussion before, and that's why we proceeded this way. It's a must. I don't see how we can do it any other way for town. Realistically, we have to do that, and. I guess there's different ways to look at it. This is my opinion. Some people will say it will. Stop or hinder development. Might slow it a little, but it's not going to stop it. And to some people, maybe that's what they want to see. They want to see it slow down anyway, so I really don't think it's going to have an effect. It's not a drastic amount of money. We've always talked about, or developers always ask us what we can do to help, and. In a half-million-dollar home, eleven thousand dollars, or five, six, whatever it is, is not going to really make a difference on the house when you put it in the mortgage, so. It's just, it it will put money in our pocket, is. Joel said, there's plenty out there to buy if you got the money.
Yeah.
And we really need to get the money.
And having the money to for water helps development, because we can't have houses without water, so.
You know, and and we do, we look at those numbers, and obviously, those are projected numbers, but when you say we have a hundred and one CFS hanging out there. It's not really a lot. I mean, obviously, there's a whole lot there that hasn't been developed, you know, when you total it, it's eighteen hundred, but. Still, after the projected amount, one oh one just didn't look a whole bunch, so. So I would entertain a motion. To approve, approve as amended, and and would these be amendments that Libby brought up? They would be amending that?
Correct.
Correct? Thank you. So it would be approved as amended. Or deny?
The motion, we approve as amended, ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Norm.
I'll second that.
Second row. Further discussion. I will take roll call, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg. Trustee Row.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Joel.
Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you, Joel.
Good work. And Legal, I know Legal had their hand in it somewhere.
Oh, she Catherine was all over it, yeah.
She got wet, is that what you're telling me? All right, next item on the agenda is item B, the employee handbook. The adoption of resolution number nineteen, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Beeta Vista, Colorado. Amending certain provisions of the employee handbook for the Town of Beeta Vista, Colorado. You're going to beat me there, Phillip.
Trying to get there. It is me.
This is you, okay?
Yes, thank you. So on page sixty-two is a memo before you tonight is is an amendment to our. Employee handbook, and just a reminder that this was. The last significant update was in twenty sixteen, and so this is, this has been due for a little while to. Make some amendments, primarily what what we are looking at is is staying in sync with with state and federal laws. Especially around leave and sick time and things like that. In twenty twenty, we did see some some additional changes. That took place with, you know, through COVID and how employers handle leave and sick leave and things like that, so. That's the meat of it. We did take an opportunity, you'll see a list in the memo of of all of the edits. That were made, so we were looking at other operations as well to make sure that. You know, we're we're kind of keeping up with with how we operate as an organization. But ultimately, this is a very important document, because every employee of the town gets a copy of it. They are instructed to read it, and then they sign it. Because a lot of this has to do with how we carry ourselves and our in our roles and our positions. And then how things such as how supervisors handle. You know, working with employees through performance considerations, terminations, things like that, so it's a very important document for us. So that is what we're bringing forward, and trustee Fay did find a couple of edits. Within the document that we took a look at, so thank you, trustee Fay, for identifying that before the meeting, so that we could. Do a little bit of research. One of them was a was a pretty simple edit, and I just highlighted here just a little bit of the wording. Was changed. The the more substantial change was down here on page twenty and had to do with the. Family medical leave, which again is something that we. We don't make up ourselves, we take direction from federal federal laws on that, so. We did have an opportunity to look at her comment on that, and so we've inserted updated language. Into the handbook as a result, so that's what's highlighted on the screen for you, so. Nothing of I would call substantial change, but good clarifying language in there. Now, so we we do appreciate that feedback. I want to credit John Schuman, who handles our HR. A lot of our HR needs and and tasks for the town. She's a tremendous help to myself and Michelle. Especially, and she put a lot of effort into into this update, so I want to. You know, recognize her for that effort. I will pause and see if there's any questions or comments about this update, and again, we're we're asking, we put this in a resolution, so we're asking for the board. To approve, and and in this case, it would be approved with amendments, because we did make some amendments, or deny resolution number nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, trustees? This is always a major undertaking, because if you don't. I hate, I don't, I'm sorry, Libby, I'm not going to put it this way, dot every i. But it really, it's, that's really what it boils down to.
It pays to have a picky person.
Did not say that, but that's really what it boils down to. I mean, when you look at the list of what you did to make changes. It's dot nice, basically, is what it is. It's, you really have to cover everything, and so, no, and and believe me. Staff appreciates your input. Second set of i's always makes big difference, big difference. Any other questions? Comments? So we're looking for a motion to approve as amended or with amendments. Or deny? Res- resolution number nineteen.
I move that we approve this ordinance with amendments.
Thank you, Libby.
I'll second that.
Second row. Further discussion. Roll call vote?
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
And trustee Row.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, staff, and make sure John hears for the input and the time that goes into this. I know it's not easy. Next item on the agenda is Water Master Plan Proposal. The board will consider approving the contract with Wright Water Engineers to carry out the twenty twenty-one master plan. Is this one, come on, I really want to give one to, I don't know.
It's Aquaman, isn't it?
Dive in all the way tonight.
Right on, thank you all. So every five to seven years or so. We like to do a wa- new water master plan. And it's it's time. We've got it in the budget this year. We're, we'd like to use Wright Water Engineers. This is Trish and Adam. They're our water engineers. They've been. The town water engineers since, gosh, the seventies at least. They know everything about the water and our infrastructure, the ins and outs. And. We, they have put forward a proposal. The bid is twenty-nine thousand dollars. It should take about eight weeks from the time they get going on it. It's within budget, but it is more than the. Well, it requires authorization from the Board of Trustees because of the dollar amount. We. So it should take about eight eight weeks. Staff will be involved, so there's going to be some time and opportunity cost, but it's well worth it. A water rate study would follow this study. And there's also potential later for a conservation conservation plan. To be written that that will not be part of this, but there will be some reference to conservation practices. The proposal is in the packet, and so hopefully you all have had a chance to look at that. This proposal was received in draft form, and we. Had the Water Advisory Board take a look at it and provide input, as well as staff take a look at it and provide input. And Wright Water Engineers. Adjusted it accordingly. There wasn't much to adjust, but. And that's what we see here, so. We ask the trustees to authorize staff to execute the contract, so we can. Get a new water master plan. Updated.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Trustees, questions? Joel, what do we expect to see highlighted, I guess? When it comes out with this new plan this year or this time?
Yeah, so they're they're going to build on the previous two. Water master plans, but they'll be talking about the existing existing water system, so getting into infrastructure. Portfolio yields, water. So getting into infrastructure, portfolio yields, water rights. We've asked them to kind of go a little deeper than in the past with water rights and and say kind of what, what we can or cannot do with certain water rights. So we don't have to keep thinking about that, like what the, what can we use the town or the supply ditch for? And that's usually a thing we have to research, you know, every couple of years with every new staff. So that'll all be included, major infrastructure projects, addressing water storage, pumping, transmission pipelines, et cetera. They'll put forward some maintenance plans or some replacement plans. They'll talk about demographics and how much it's changed so that SFE counts. And predictions will, will have a more up to date growth rate. And they'll also take a look at like the peak, peak factors for summer. So what is our peak demand on those hot summer days? So we can plan growth according to that and see, start to make sense of conservation efforts. They'll do some long term water analyses, use patterns, kind of compare the town to state, national level. Take a look at the reduced, trend of reduced water usage. And they're going to dive into our water rights, like I said, but you know, they'll, they'll comment on one number four, potential additional well. They'll look at the, the, yeah, the estimated yields for the dry field ditch. That's our, that's our new ditch. So we want to, you know, they'll pay attention to low water years and average years. So what we can do with that ultimately. And this is one interesting idea they're bringing up is the lifer or lurf, I guess, the lurf, which is the lawn irrigation return flow. So they're going to take a look and see, can we file a claim for the water that's coming off the lawns? We haven't done that before. And so they're going to take a look at doing that, especially for the Arkansas wells. I don't know if we can do that for some of our water rights, but definitely we can for, for others. So so that's a pretty good synopsis. They'll give us, you know, a kind of a roadmap for the future, what we should do, what, you know, the, they, we have this Gorrell Meadow infiltration gallery expansion that we're doing. And so, so they can tie into that project. That's in the design phase. They're not going to plan out that because it's already in planning elsewhere. But they can, you know, comment on it and and address that as well. So they'll prepare the report, give a presentation to the trustees. We would like to, which will be a public presentation. We'd like to take the draft and stick it at town hall or the library, library or somewhere where the public can have a couple of weeks to review it and make some edits or, you know, if, a lot of people in the public know a lot about water and water rights and things. So they might have some suggestions to it that, that, that we don't know, including the water board as well. So I think that's, is that answer, Duff?
Yes, oh, very much so. Yes, thank you very much. Just, you know, like I say, a high level clarification. I didn't even realize when you said it, infrastructure replacement. You know, I, I didn't even think about like identifying where we need to look at doing replacement. I mean, obviously, this is a broader, I guess, much larger than I actually never thought it was. I just didn't think it would involve Sean. Sean doesn't want to be involved.
It'll help Sean.
You know, I just really didn't even think about that. That's interesting. That's interesting. Any other questions?
Is there any, are they going to look into Ivy League at all, or is that a separate thing altogether?
Oh, that's a good question. Sean, do you know, to the extent that they, I know Ivy League is its own system and they're responsible for their own maintenance. And, but Sean, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I do. Just a little bit. I, I think that the portfolio should capture Ivy League and and then we can kind of go with what right water, you know, sees on how we can, you know, kind of navigate through that. But that annual demand, peak demand usage for Ivy League is really important for our, for our portfolio. So I do think that that information will be provided, needs to be provided to right water. Where we go with that, we'll see.
That's a very good question, Devin, and maybe that would be a point to highlight. Definitely to right water, that we would, the possibility of how we can fix, and I'll use that term, fix that situation if we can. Maybe they can work that into this master plan.
Improve.
Yes, it has to have something, needs to be done. Obviously, we have concerns about that. So that's a good point, very good point.
Mayor?
Yes.
It occurs to me that with Ivy League, it, that seems to be where a lot of our unaccounted for water loss occurs. And I've wondered if we've ever thought about charging them the value of the water that's getting lost. Because otherwise, they don't really have any incentive to, to help track down where those losses are occurring.
Sean, can you say a couple of words related to that? Because we do have a billing structure that's, I don't think it necessarily motivates, but they do pay for actual water. But can you say a few words related to our ongoing work with Ivy League related to their loss?
Yeah, so recently, coming into twenty twenty one, it was, I think, in February, I shared with their, I guess, representative for, for the Ivy League, you know, developed subdivision, the report that I shared with you all, and it kind of captures the, the usage and the unaccounted usage. Kind of to follow up on that a little bit with, with the historical conversations that the town has had with Ivy League. I think they've been aware of it, and I think they've been doing things to, to, to help impact that. It's been a few years since they've done any onsite improvements, but it was the last water main replacement project they, they performed was in two thousand seventeen. And all of those efforts were, were, you know, done to help mitigate the, the water loss that they're experiencing. And so it's, it's been a little while since they've made strong efforts. You know, we, we came in there and we did some, some link detecting with some of our equipment, you know, last month to try to, you know, see if we could find something because a lot has changed in that area. But moving into, you know, where we go from, you know, what we're billing and what we're capturing, you know, with their system, we have a master meter in place, and that's how we're able to identify the water loss. So there's a meter that, that captures all the water that flows into the development. And then once it's in there, the, the billed water usage is, is metered at each individual house or residence or unit there. And, and so that's where we're seeing the discrepancy. And, you know, the, if I'm not mistaken, I think that the annual unaccounted is, is close to, is four or five million a year. And for, you know, the amount of houses that are in there, it's just, it's just pretty excessive. I do think that we're having conversations to, to afford that opportunity, the town, the opportunity to, to possibly capture that unaccounted usage at the meter. That would probably be for further discussion because there is a, there is infrastructure in place to identify that, that, that loss. You know, that it is actually happening within that distribution system that is, doesn't belong to the town.
Well, right now, doesn't Ivy League pay one point five?
Yeah. Yeah, one point five.
So if we weren't, if, if we did a water rate study and they were losing so much water up there, can we bump that, we could bump that up, can't we?
Guess it could be all part of the consideration of it. Ways to increase the motivation, perhaps.
Yeah, it goes back to the question of are we taking care of the water that we have now? And that, that water is just basically disappearing and we're not getting any capital buildup from them paying for it.
And that's it. That's where I think the, the study comes in and that can really help us to guide us in a direction is, you know, this is really important. It's bigger than we think it is or not. And take into what Norm's saying, well, sure, maybe it is, maybe we need to bump it and make it more important to them. So it's, it's a possibility.
Is there ever been a time in recent memory where there isn't water loss at Ivy League?
Actually, we're, as long as I've been on the board, no, but this is the best we've been.
Yes.
It's been a concern since I've been on board. I always talked about it, never been really to put. It's gotten better and better and better, but we've never been able to put our finger on where is it? And, and I think we've even looked at other municipalities to see what their percentages were, to see where we fall. And we're, we're a little high, but the, the question then becomes is, is are they really accurate too? I mean, I think there's a lot of variables in, in water calculations and usage and loss. But we seem to be high. We just seem to be high. But it's a lot better than it used to be. So we have a question on the table. We need a motion. Consider approving a contract with right water engineers to carry out this master plan twenty twenty one.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Devin. Second, Nyberg. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg. Trustee Row.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Joel.
Thank you all.
Got a direction and thank you, Sean, everybody involved. Appreciate it. Trustee staff interaction, interne- interaction. Do you want to correct that, by the way? Joel, do you want to start it off? You're warmed up.
I'll, I'll ask one thing. We were, we were talking about a, seeing what the trustees would think. We were, we were talking about parks and, and thinking about, you know, retail liquor shops and things because there's been different discussions about where some could go. And, and it comes to our attention that there's no, nothing in the code that separates retail liquor from town parks. And so we were kind of wondering if the board would have an appetite to, to visit that. If, if you guys would contemplate, like to contemplate a, a physical separation from town parks and retail liquor. We have it for, you know, this is from schools for, for the sale, you know, beer and hotel liquor and that kind of thing, but not for the actual retail liquor store. So.
And that would be considered outdoor sales, correct, Joel?
Yeah, like, like Little Daisy kind of a operation.
Like selling like in the park, you mean? Like you're going to sell some liquor in the park?
So you could have a, you could have a park and then a lot right next to it that could be a liquor store and, and have it right next to it.
Just down with Little Daisy.
So we're.
Right there.
Exactly. So we're talking about separation of retail, a retail establishment, location pertaining to a park.
Oh, like, like a distance wise?
Yes, yeah.
Similar to what we did with marijuana.
Right, right. I thought you were like selling liquor in a park.
Actually. What do you think? Do we want to entertain that? Look at grounds for lines?
I don't know. Well, like, it's already not allowed to have like an open container in a park, right? Does that please itself?
Other than how is that, right now it is allowed. Am I correct because of COVID?
Not in a, not in a park.
Not in the park.
Not in a park, no.
You're allowed to take liquor out of a establishment, but you can't drink it in public.
Right. Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Seems like our liquor stores now are really close to parks. And I don't know that that's caused us any problems. I mean, Little Daisy is still quite close to McPhelamy. And Raleigh is pretty close to the Columbine Park, you know, just across from it. And that St. Charles, that little triangle park, Raleigh's close to that.
For somewhere.
Classify that as a park?
I think it is. I think it is classified.
Technically is, yes.
Very small.
So I guess my question would come back to staff. Is that something you're seeing that could be create, create a concern?
We, we have had some questions from the public about specific locations. And we've evaluated, done some initial evaluation. And there is the possibility that a liquor store could go in right next to an existing park.
Down there, yeah, I've heard of them.
Got you. And or skate park kind of thing. So it just, and then so staff and thinking through that, it's like, does that pass the litmus test of, does that seem right? I don't know.
If it's for marijuana, we could entertain.
The same.
Same for, yeah, same concept for liquor store.
Not that deep. Please don't go that deep.
But we didn't include the parks. It just ended up, there was schools.
Right.
Existing marijuana establishments and then medical treatment of marijuana, drug and alcohol treatment.
So it just basically covered the existing parks and that. Okay. Okay.
But, you know, in, in taking that into consideration, I never thought about the quote skate park. Sure, you know, that kind of, you go, oh, didn't think about that. And it never comes to light until somebody brings it up. And that's, you know, I appreciate staff bringing that up, but I'd have never thought of it.
It's worth visiting.
Okay, let's visit it.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sure.
We'll think about it and bring back some, some thoughts. Okay.
You know, we'll try to be as easy as we can on call.
Plenty of things.
That was, that was on my head. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Not much for me tonight, other than in the next week, Doug will have been with us for a year. So he's finally settling in and getting, getting stuff done, dealing with developers and handling permits. So he's coming up on his one year anniversary. Other than that, we're just trying to muddle through.
Very good. Congratulations to him and you.
Thank you.
All righty, Jack?
Nothing to report from here. Have a great evening, folks.
Thank you, Jack. Michelle?
Field work for the audit was supposed to start yesterday, but the weather is not cooperating to have auditors travel. So as fastidious as auditors are, apparently they can't drive in the snow. So we are rescheduling the field work for one of the last two weeks in April. And, and we're start, we're working on the stuff that can be done remotely already. So the field work is just verifying invoices and doing tests with eyes on whatever it is they need to test, depending on their audit plan. So that is all I have.
Hey, that sounds like, almost like an excuse another treasurer would have used. It's going to be late this year.
No, it's not going to be late. It's not going to be late.
It's not whether it's COVID.
There you go. Thank you, Michelle. Sean?
Thank you.
Yeah, just want to give a big thanks to all the help we've had these last couple of months with water advisory board, staff, trustee liaison. trustee liaison for the water plant expansion project reviews. And, and yeah, big thanks to Mother Nature too. It's good to see some snow up in the hills. And, yeah, really, really optimistic about our, 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 our our snowpack this year. So it's looking up.
It is. Thank you, Sean. It is looking up. Earl?
Good evening. I'm just listening in, getting warmed up for the session later tonight. And we've had a great busy start to the week and I'm excited about everything that's gonna be happening this spring here with rec. But other than that, it's been a pleasure to listen to you guys as I've been managing kids on spring break the last couple of hours here.
All right, thank you, Earl. Paula?
Are we gonna talk about our other?
I'll bring that up, yeah.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Nora?
One question. Or with the lariat being down, shut down, and rumor has it, it's possibly for sale.
It is.
Does that platform that's taking out parking spots, is that under a special use?
It's under a license. It's under a license, so they're paying for that still.
So it, it would go with the business?
I believe it would go with the business. Mark, do you have any initial reaction to that?
Yeah, it's a revocable license agreement with the, that property. So I would defer to legal staff on whether it's with the owner or the property. But I believe with that property. So it, but it is a revocable license agreement that the board can consider anything that it wants.
I haven't looked at it in a while, so I need to look at it again. But I'm guessing that it could be assigned with the town's consent. That sounds like a provision we would have put in there.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Mark. It seemed to me like, and we even discussed that when it was closed. I think they paid their fee for the year, and so that's why it's allowed to still be there.
We've invoiced them for 2021.
I was kind of curious if it was attached.
Yeah.
And will go.
And I assume it's in the wording somewhere. Obviously, in the agreement, there'd be something that says it with or without. You know, good question, though. Good question. Libby?
Well, I keep helping out with the volunteer income tax preparation. And it occurred to me today that we could be doing tax returns for city employees. Tell employees if you want to put out any sort of a notice to them.
Okay.
Because we're totally, you know, free and we don't need a lot of documentation from people. It's pretty easy, quick. They need to call for an appointment.
Are there any qualifications to get that, like?
We don't like to do rental properties or businesses that show a loss. But basically, most of the town employees would probably have, you know, W2 income.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good point. Thank you very much. Devin?
I'm good.
Okay. It sounded like you had something you were gonna add, Philip.
Oh, boy. Okay, so a little, little project, little, that Paula, Joel and myself have been working on since last fall is looking at the request from Surf Hotel to, they're looking to expand their liquor, liquor license premise down in South Main. If you remember, they have the property on the lawn that they're half of the park down there. And they, at the board's direction, staff with the applicant or the person requesting this and looking and talking with the state have kind of concluded what would be required to achieve what the hotel is looking to do, which essentially is allowing people to take alcohol from the hotel and move about to the lawn and/or the beach across the public right of way at any time. That's essentially the free flow desire that they have. In conclusion of that, from the state's requirements, we, the town would essentially need to turn over ownership of the right of way of the street sidewalk and, and provide control to the hotel of that right of way. And so, you know, we wanted to let the board know that we have concluded that effort. And essentially, that's the very high level conclusion that we've all come to. We have drafted a response back to Jed Selby, who, who approached the board requesting this. Essentially, given the town would have to turn over the right of way and the significant impact that would have to the, the makeup of that park and the neighborhood down there, staff is not bringing forward a recommendation to the board to pursue that. We don't feel like that that's something that would be consistent of something we would do anywhere else in town and bring forward something proactively to the board. So we're gonna let Jed know that that's, that's kind of our conclusion. And that if he wants to continue pursuit of this, he could, he could approach the board in public comment requesting time on a future agenda to further discuss. And then the board could, at that time, decide to add that to a future agenda or not, or direct staff to do something else at that time. So I want to let you know that's, that's where staff is at and what we plan to communicate back to Jed. But if you have any, if you have a different thought or a different desire for how this could proceed, we're certainly open to that. Did that make sense?
What was the initial agreement? Or do we even have an agreement about it at all?
There's no agreement. They do have, under the COVID, the COVID rules for alcohol, they, right now, they did expand their premise so that servers can carry alcohol to, from the hotel over to the lawn. So that, that's in place now, but that's a temporary thing. There is no other agreement to license the area or do anything else special with it.
Because that was something that was on the table was turning over that road to them.
Correct. The original request was basically provide the appropriate a level of control to the hotel of the right of way per whatever the state was going to require. In exchange, they would build bathrooms earlier than what the development agreement required.
That would be amazing.
And it would be amazing. Yes. So, but essentially, what, what we've found out from the state, that level of essentially commitment from the town to turn over a right of way is not something stat, and plus, we have not seen the public involvement, neighborhood involvement. They would give us a comfort level that this would be something the public would be supportive of. So.
Yeah.
We don't want to put the board on the spot. We'd much rather let the board tell us we want to pursue this or no, we don't. Or just kind of let it be and then let, let the requester come back if there's more discussion to be had.
And that's the discussion that Philip and I had is that's the way we left it is, I guess we'd put the burden in Jed's hands to find out what the state was gonna say. Well, the state has spoken. The only way they're gonna allow it to do it is if we give him the street, basically. So we give that away. So really, what we're asking here, do we even want to entertain being entertained? To talk about giving away the street, or do we want to just say, you know, we're not interested at all? We don't even want to hear anymore? That's, that's kind of a question. Do we want to entertain that talk? Do we want? Obviously, we could bring in public comment. I mean, that's gonna have to happen anyway. Because you have a whole group of people down there that you're gonna be saying, hey, here's what we're gonna do to you. We're gonna take away that access to that street. I mean, things like that, so.
You know, I go with what staff recommends, and if it comes back, then we'll deal with it then, so.
Do you even want to go that far? Do we want to even entertain conversation? Are we interested in even considering, giving consideration to giving away the street?
Yeah, because, like you said, there isn't a huge public outcry saying, we want this. It's really just the, the business.
Exactly.
And this affects town.
And it's gonna affect the people that live there.
And the communities, so. Makes it difficult.
I would take, you know, and I think Philip.
Build like a tunnel or something.
Motion would be great to say, I make a motion not to entertain this thought process or something.
I'll make a motion. We do not entertain this thought process in any way.
Thank you.
I don't think we can keep him from talking to us.
No.
All the comment, I mean, everybody has the right to report their position.
Yeah, but he's coming to us. We're not going to him.
Yeah.
So that's why.
Yeah, we don't have to take the next step. I'm putting it on an agenda. It's already been on an agenda, hasn't it?
I was just gonna say that it's already been in front of us before. It's like, we're gonna keep beating this dog until it moves. It's like, it's not gonna move. You know, we have to, that's the decision you make here is how far do we want to keep going with this? I guess this is the way I put it.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second further discussion? And I understand where you're all coming from. I do. If it hadn't been before us before, and he can still always come to quote public comment and make a comment. So that's never, that really is never dead. That doesn't mean we have to entertain the thought of bringing it back unless he convinces you to bring it back. You want to do roll call?
Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Row?
Yes.
And Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you all very much. We'll communicate back to him with that. The other thing, just, just as a reminder, in case you do see like, hey, they're closing the road this summer, that this doesn't prohibit him from following the special event permit process and temporary use as we've seen in the past with like the beach events and things like that. So we'll still evaluate those kinds of requests, but we, we will no longer pursue some other solution.
Vacation of a right of way is basically what we'd be talking about.
Right. Yep, thank you all.
Thank you. I have nothing. So the next item on the agenda is executive session. An executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Paragraph 4, Subparagraph E, concerning the potential annexation and master planning of the tribe of property adjacent to the town rodeo grounds. I'm in the motion to go into executive session.
South Main.
Second.
And a second further discussion. Paul in favor, Seattle?
Hi.
Okay, we are going into executive session. Who do we have discussing with?
We were gonna have our Recreation Director, Earl Richmond, Special Project Manager, Joel Benson. Let's see, let me go back to Zoom. I lost it here. There we go. Is Catherine still on? Yes, Legal Representation. And I think that's it. And myself.